We did not materialize their hand. That was, I think Dawn was down in Merrimack and they were flooding and at the farm. There was flooding running down the street. She said, "Oh, great." The fog jumped out. At the farm. But it's a hayfield that we made. It hasn't changed color. It's supposed to be cleaned up after a little bit of rain. See, we can irrigate those, right?
Okay, so it is seven o'clock, so if you'd join me in the pledge. All right, again, just to remind people about using the microphones again tonight, so. Approval of manifests?
I have two. The first, here's the first one. I certify that the manifests listed below totaling one million, two hundred twenty-six thousand, two hundred eighty-three dollars and twelve cents have been reviewed by me and found to be proper charges against Contuckit Valley School District for goods and/or services received and have been properly processed prior to the submission to the school board.
Move to accept the manifest? Okay, second.
Okay, any questions? All right, just so everyone knows, with the new laws that we've been updated on, because Jim is taking time off to go to his, to his daughter's wedding instead of being here, because he's remote, every vote we take tonight needs to be a roll call vote. So, if there, if there are no other questions, then Tom, you want to start us? All those approved?
Curtis, yes.
Tom, yes.
Jim, yes.
Kat, yes.
Okay, it's unanimous.
Jim, yes.
Sorry, we'll remember you're at the end.
And I have a second one. I certify that the manifests listed below totaling one million, five hundred fifty-one thousand, six hundred, six dollars and seven cents has been, have been reviewed by me and have found to be proper charges against Contuckit Valley School District for goods and/or services received and have been properly processed prior to the submissions.
Can I have a motion?
Second.
Okay, Tom, would you start us?
Greg, I.
Curtis, yes. Tom, yes.
Jim, yes.
Kat, yes.
Okay, it's unanimous.
Jim, yes.
Now it's unanimous. You gotta speak up quicker, Jim.
Sorry.
Right, we do need to, we do need to vote to make an addition to the, to the agenda tonight in that we need to add a discussion of a job description for our athletic trainer. So could I have a motion to add that to the agenda?
So move.
Okay, Tom?
Curtis, yes. Tom, yes. Jim, yes.
Kat, yes.
Unanimous.
Jim, yes.
You're looking for, you're looking for Kat to say yes. Or no.
Yes.
Okay, public comment. Anyone from the public? Yes?
I have, this is a public comment and a point of pride. The New Hampshire Press Association recently gave out some awards for distinguished journalism, and Jessica Timmons from Greenfield was honored in two categories, best feature and best arts feature, and I'm sure if they had one on school board reporting, she'd have won that as well. Congratulations, Jessica, and glad you're here to report on us.
Thank you for all you've done with this. Okay, to report.
Thanks. The withdrawal financial subcommittee met on Thursday, August 7th. We continued discussion on identifying district costs and services that are related to FES as well as district costs that would change after a hypothetical withdrawal. We looked at SAU costs within the potential for a multi-district SAU. We discussed budgetary considerations for an independent SAU model. We reviewed special education cost assumptions and the impossibility of those assumptions. We also further discussed the disposition of property and trusts. The next withdrawal meeting will be a full committee meeting, and it will be this Thursday. And in addition to that, I was updated prior to the meeting this evening that the town of Temple last evening held a special town meeting whereby they approved to the, they approved rescinding, yeah, they approved a motion to rescind their withdrawal petition. So they've withdrawn their withdrawal request. We, as a full committee, will discuss their meeting on Thursday, and we will likely bring their case to a vote. And then, any questions around withdrawal? Communications, the communications committee met on Tuesday, August 12th. We spent the majority of the meeting planning for the community forum on the impending personal communication device ban. The forum was held last Wednesday, the 13th, and the presentation and discussion that followed were, I think, and I hope, very helpful to families, staff, and to board members alike. For those in the community who still have questions or are just learning about the coming bell-to-bell device ban, I'd encourage you to watch the forum. It sits atop our ConVal Events YouTube channel. If you have questions that are, as of yet unanswered, please, you can still submit them to forum@conval.edu. We'd be happy to get them answered. I'd like to thank everybody who participated, from the board, from the SAU, and particularly the high school teachers who were involved. They did a great job presenting. They'd be Ashley Mudrick, Carol Young, Leslie Holcomb, Tyler Mudrick. Thank you all.
Janine?
First of all, we had a request to change our meeting day from Tuesdays to Monday to accommodate Kat's training for, to become an EMT. And so I'd like to ask the committee members if that is okay with them. We'd still be meeting at six o'clock, but it would be Monday for the months of September, October, and November. Tom? That's okay with you? Bill?
Sure.
Jim? Okay. It doesn't have to start in September?
The course starts September 2nd, so it doesn't, the change in meeting doesn't have to happen until after September 2nd.
Okay. Is it, was that the only date that was a problem for you?
No, that, there's a, that one.
Okay. Well, it's the fourth week anyway. It's the fourth week. Okay, so we will change that meeting day to Mondays for September, October, and November. And also, we have to add an additional work meeting for reviewing sealed minutes when we get to the calendar. Okay, so we met on August 14th, a Thursday night, and we spent a couple of hours reviewing four big policies that are up for first read tonight. The first one is Policy E-H-A-G, Use of Generative Artificial Intelligence. It's a new policy. Halford very graciously came and developed the policy for us and, and like taught us all about generative. And please, nobody ask me any questions about, I can talk about the policy. I really can't talk about generative AI. But he did an excellent job with the policy. I look forward to hearing your comments after you read it. Then we have a new policy, the Parental Bill of Rights, AB, which we've all eagerly looked forward to. Most of it is, it's Policy AB. Most of it, it's every, most of everything that's covered in that policy, in the law, we've already had policies on. They're already a part of our practices. The new part is primarily emphasis on teachers and staff responsibility to transparency with parents. The third one is Policy J-I-C-G, Unauthorized Communication Devices, which is the one we rolled out, the draft policy, last Wednesday night at the community forum. Very positive reception. Our teachers did a wonderful job. They were on the ball before this law was passed, and they were intending to go to administration and ask that they be able to develop this policy and implement in the high school. They felt it was very necessary. So a lot of parents had a lot of questions about the implementation. The policy pretty much stayed the same other than smartwatches. Smartwatches are no-go. So I look forward to your feedback on that policy. And then Policy E-B-C-H, Chemical Safety and Chemical Hygiene. We've just recently approved this policy. There's only one minor change because of a piece of legislation, and that minor change is highlighted in yellow in your policy packet.
Jim, Budget and Property?
Yes, Budget and Property. I'd happily report, the deal was, Neil reported that we have back transferred the nine hundred twenty-five thousand dollars authorized by the Motors March from the General Funds Trust on just nine hundred thousand to the Building Capital Reserve Fund and twenty-five thousand dollars to the, I forget which one it was, to the Energy Efficiency Fund. That leaves us with a discussion of what to do with the remainder of the fund balance, which is actually item eight on the agenda, I believe, so I won't say anything more about that other than the fact that we, the Budget and Property Team did get a preview of Neil's presentation. We discussed it, and we'll leave it at that. We're gonna even have to make a, we're gonna hear about it tonight, but we're gonna make our decision two weeks from now. So you have time to think about the decision you need to make. Budget guidance, we talked about the system here, eighty-seven budget guidance in detail. I'm not gonna go through the particulars of that. What we will do is I'll send out the draft that we talked about, and I will, all board members who have an opportunity to look at it will be asking you to vote on it in September 2nd meeting. Decision RFP, we're working on that, but it looks like what we might be recommending, what Neil might be recommending is to actually extend the current contract maybe by a year. So more on that later. And the final thing is, as you all know, we did not vote on, we decided not to pursue a warrant article for the CP High School Project last March. It's unclear at this point what the state's position is on that. We have no Education Commissioner, but she has literally stated what she intends to do. We think it'll be the. We think we're not gonna lose our place in line, but we very well could. And what's unclear is if we have to do anything by January 1st in order to get, to reserve our funding. And we have initiated some discussions, the architect, in terms of what they might be able to do. They, they quit support us. We had to do a last-minute, fast, fast-track job, but I don't think we're gonna wanna do that in any case, because I think taking anything back to voters needs to be well thought out. So I will report more later as we find out more about the status of the funding, and that's it for tonight.
Okay, thank you. At the last meeting, I announced that we were going to institute a facilities committee, and I asked people if they would be interested in it, please notify me. I did have five board members who did ask about being part of that committee. So Tom Burgess has volunteered to steer that committee for us, and the committee will also include Jim Kingston, Jim Fredrickson, Dan Harper, and Curtis Hamilton. So all five of those people volunteered to be on that committee. And we will begin looking at our facilities, seeing, looking at the reports of the condition they're in, looking at what we need to do with the facilities, and going forward how we're gonna utilize those facilities. The last report on committees is that we want to welcome our new assistant superintendent, Amy Stevenson, who's here with us tonight. And Curtis and I met with her this morning and made sure that she was signed on contract, so when we told her all of the details of what we've been going through, it was too late for her to change her minds. So later on in new business, we will talk about the fact that we've had a lot of requests, and we are gonna reestablish the education committee. So we'll talk just a little bit about that. At this point in time, we're down to consent agenda, and this is where we'll talk about the trainer position. Dr. Forrest?
So in the past, we have contracted with the hospital for an athletic trainer. The athletic trainer who had been in that role has moved on to other things. So it has, we've been working really hard to find a replacement. Replacing athletic, like other positions, has been very difficult. We sent out an RFP to multiple places. We posted the position. And at this moment in time, we are kind of putting together coverage by a number of people. So we went to the NHIAA, lists the different roles that can cover the responsibilities of an athletic trainer. So can be an athletic trainer, it can be a board-certified sports physical therapist, it can be a emergency medical technician, an EMT, a nurse, a nurse practitioner, a physician, a physician's assistant. So right now, we have people that are willing to do days, hours, and so Larry has just been really busy trying to make sure practices and games are covered. We have brought this job description forward, not as an athletic trainer, but as a high school athletic medical personnel, because if we can hire people part-time, so if somebody agrees to do it Tuesday, we can hire that person, and then if they're our employee, then they're, they'll be covered under our insurance. The issue is, right now, we have people that are willing to cover small amounts of time, but if we said to them, which we would need to, if we were contracting with them independently, that they would need to have liability insurance and have all these pieces, it, it wouldn't, it would potentially make them, it not worth their while because of the cost of that. So this job description, we found a full-time athletic trainer that would be great, but in the meantime, what we'd like to do is hire people with, a variety of people with these backgrounds to provide coverage at games and practices. So I'm happy to answer questions.
So you said that if you are, if you are like hiring them piecemeal, they would have to have their own liability insurance?
Not if we're gonna hire them as our employees, which is what we're proposing. If we independently contracted with them, if they didn't already have it, they would need to make sure that they have their own insurance and provide us with a copy of it.
Yeah. I think in your list of licensed medical professionals, I would much rather, I think you should get rid of board-certified sports in front of physical therapists, and I mean, just nurse. I think for an athletic trainer, I'd much rather have any physical therapist than any, just any nurse, you know, because nurse could include an LPN, right? I mean, so.
So the list. So the list is from NHII, NHIAA, and my understanding, after talking to Larry, is if you weren't a board-certified sports physical therapist, then a physical therapist would not meet the, we can check again, but.
I think you need to look at what we're actually utilizing this for, and you know, it's like for, at the football games, we have to have an EMT there for coverage. So this position essentially is like a triage position to make sure that the person is taken care of in, so that we can get emergency people there to, to deal with the situation.
We would still continue to work to get, I mean, our, the ideal obviously would be a certified athletic trainer that was covering everything for us.
Yes.
Just think regardless of what we have up there for qualifications, they still have to be screened, interviewed, and they have to fit, they have to be a good fit regardless of the titles.
Janine?
So athletic trainer would be something separate? Like we need, we have an EMT, somebody that can triage, act as a triage person in case of injury, but do they, they wouldn't be doing athletic training, right? Would they be doing, I mean?
Well, they would be doing as much of the role as they could with their certification.
Okay.
Tom?
So an athletic trainer has multiple positions in, on-field trauma is probably not his or her specialty. The specialty of a trainer is to get athletes to a position to compete and then handle any aches and pains after. So mind you, taped ankles, taped knees, and that kind of thing is what we're looking at from a trainer versus on-site, compound broken bone. So we need to be able to have somebody that knows how to tape an ankle, tape a shoulder versus an EMT. Now, I'm guessing we have to, from NIAA, that we have to have an EMT in ambulance on-site during any athletic game. I don't know the answer to that, but, so I wanna make sure that we understand that a trainer is not just game day. He gets us to the game.
Yes. Yeah, this is not an ideal situation, right? That some of this, if we're having an EMT or. That some of this, if we're having an EMT or a nurse, we're providing coverage for games and practices if something happens. They're not going to bring what an athletic trainer would bring. And we are still working to get an athletic trainer. I think we have three days of coverage with a certified athletic trainer, but we need coverage at all the practices and games. And this is what NHIAA identifies. And so we're looking to provide that coverage for the times when we don't have an athletic trainer.
The EMT is primarily for football games because of the NHIA requires that because of the situation in football games, that a EMT be on-site for the football games. But the athletic trainer would be at some, at the games other than the football games, so... Other questions? Yes?
Not about this, but about the department head?
Pardon me?
About the department head position?
Yeah.
I assume this is nothing new. We've had department heads in the past, have we not? Okay, just checking. Is there any reason why this is coming back out now? Has it just not been a job description for them, or...
There's not been, are we jumping to, there's not been an official department head job description in the past. And during negotiations, they negotiated a different stipend. And so we just wanted to make sure it was clear exactly what the responsibilities were for department heads.
Okay. Any other questions about anything in the consent agenda items? Yes?
On personnel, the nominations? I think it's great that we've got these. We've gotten some from Conval a month or so ago, SMS. And maybe I missed this, and maybe it's on the way, but what about GBS and nominations for co-curricular and sports for the fall?
I'd have to check with Michael.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Okay, can I have a motion to accept all the items in the consent agenda?
I make a motion to...
Pardon me?
I can, we can make a motion, but if it's a consent agenda, I don't think we need a motion.
We, at the last meeting, I explained that our legal counsel has said that we can take the consent agenda as an entirety, but that a motion to accept the entire consent agenda has to be made.
I'll second Kat's motion.
Okay. Tom, you want to start off?
Greg, sure.
Curtis, yes.
Tom, yes.
Jim, yes.
Kat, yes. Jim, you're up.
Jim?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, down to superintendent's report.
So monthly events calendar. For August, this Thursday, we have a selectmen's advisory committee at 6:00 and withdrawal study committee at 7:00. Anything else for this week? Okay, on August 26th, the last week of August, we have a communications committee meeting at 5:00, followed by a policy committee meeting at 6:00. And that's all we have scheduled for next week unless somebody has something. Okay, September.
Can I ask a question? Just, when I ask, we keep facilities in mind as we go through this calendar. Tom, lead the way if you have thoughts.
I want to meet with Michael and Curtis to discuss this, and then before I move ahead with any planned meetings, if that's okay.
Yeah, we thought on one of the next Tuesdays that you and Anne and Amy and I and Tom would get together and talk about what the plan is going forward. And then we would start meeting in September.
Okay, September, the first week in September, on September 2nd, which is a Tuesday, we have a budget and property meeting at 5:30, followed by a board meeting at 7:00. And that is all we have scheduled for that week. Anything else? Okay, during the second week of September, on Tuesday, September 9th, we have a school board goal-setting work session. And on Thursday, September 11th, we have a withdrawal study committee meeting at 6:00. Anything else for the second week in September? Okay, for the third week in September, we have a budget and property committee meeting at 5:30 on September 16th, followed by a school board meeting at 7:00. Anything else for that week?
I'd like to schedule a communications meeting for Sept, in the month of September. I'm flexible as to when that could be, since we're meeting at the end of August. It could be towards the end of September. Thursday, the 18th is an option. If we want to keep it to Tuesdays, Thursdays, we could also meet after a policy committee, but I know you guys might be going long with your non-public, so no, it's a no. Oh, you're moving the 23rd to Monday? Well, there's...
There's a budget and budget drop. I can't do Tuesdays or Thursdays, but you can assign me to do things.
Okay. Let's do the Thursday, the 18th. Let's call it 6:00. Yeah. We'll review Kat's great work in her absence.
Okay, during the fourth week of September, on Monday, the 22nd, there will be a policy committee meeting at 6:00 PM. And on Thursday, September 25th, there's a selectmen's advisory committee at 6:00, followed by a withdrawal study committee at 7:00. And that's it for September, unless somebody has something.
Curtis, any plan on a withdrawal financial?
No. I think the rest of the way out, we're going to be full committee. And as I'm seeing it, there's likely going to be one more meeting after the 25th that would push into the first week of October, and that should wrap us.
Okay, board requests?
Okay, Carrie Coats, our director of special, not special, student services, has addressed the pre-K questions that were brought forward. And I just need to connect with Neil tomorrow to finalize the cost question, and I will get that out. School, we had a request for the school, the school goals with the plan sheets. And I believe I'm just missing one of those because I was going to send them out as a batch, so I'll get that tomorrow and get those out. And then the third outstanding request, Curtis had a question about a Pennsylvania company that is selling Conval gear. We are getting checks, I learned, which I did not know. But we're digging into exactly if there's an agreement or how that happened, so that's, we're looking into that, so we'll get back to you. So it's a company that's selling Conval gear at, what, CVS and Shaw's and so. I'll have more information for you. And are there, were there any other outstanding board requests? Okay, great.
So for those of you who don't know her, our new special ed director is Deb Riley, and she is here with us tonight. And I know the board has had a lot of questions about special ed, so I'm sure she'll be meeting with us to talk about special education in the near future. So, welcome. Okay, old business. We did have a change that has to be made because originally in these handbook, it did say that the watches were appropriate as long as they were turned off. But we have found since that, that the watches are not appropriate no matter what. So do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, we thought if students could turn off the notifications and so that it wasn't connected to the internet, that they'd be able to use watches, the smartwatches. And we wanted, we were hoping to support students, especially with the health aspect of counting steps and those types of things. But the law does not give us that flexibility because it would still be the use of a device that has the ability to connect with the internet and communication. So we had to revise the handbooks and take that piece out. And since you approved handbooks, we wanted to bring back that revised section, and hopefully you'll approve it so that we can get the first aid packets.
I move we approve the revised SMS and GBS and high school handbooks as presented.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, Tom, you want to start us off?
Greg, yeah.
Curtis, yes.
Tom, yes.
Jim, yes.
Kat, yes.
Jim? Okay. Down to new business, re-establishment of the education committee. We have had several board members ask about re-establishing that. Essentially, we were waiting until our new assistant superintendent came and could lead that committee. And so we will be re-establishing that education committee to look at various components of our education system and then bringing things back to the board from there. So do you want to speak more to that, either one of you?
Okay, no, it's not, sorry. So I look forward to working with the committee. I've done a lot of work in subcommittees with boards, and I understand that the education committee hasn't met in several years. So I look forward to, you know, working to kind of see what the needs are in the schools and the staff and the community, and working with the subcommittee to take to the full board how we can, you know, ensure our curriculum renewals are appropriate, all of our educational materials are grounded in research, taking a look at our MTSS. And not all of you might know what MTSS is, but that's okay. That's multi-tiered systems of support and services to make sure that we have really, really strong systems in all of our schools that are, that are consistent in all of our schools, that make sure that we provide appropriate intervention to students to keep those special education numbers from growing too high, and also to ensure that students don't get inappropriately identified as special education students. So that's just some of the work that we've been talking about doing. So I look forward to working with all of you on behalf of our students.
So, go ahead.
Well, I was just going to add, I know that the reason that education committee was disbanded was that the work that they did, they felt was, what I remember hearing Dick Dunian explain, was that that should come to the full committee because it's the most important thing we do, is look at the education aspect. But I think now that we have Amy, the value in having the education committee is the ability in the committees to have the informal conversations as you go through things, which you can't really have, I think, at the board as much. Here, we bring kind of, kind of the final recommendations or the more polished. So I think really looking at curriculum renewal, if new courses are proposed at the high school, those went through the ed committee. So there are a lot of pieces that I think need more attention than they're getting right now, so...
And like all the other committees, number one, there will be an agenda posted. Additional people will obviously be attending the committee depending on what's on the agenda for that point in time. If it's special ed, then special ed people. If it's high school, you know, high school people, et cetera. And as other committees, board members, any board members, welcome to attend any of the committees that they see the agenda as something that they're interested in hearing about or have concerns about. And, but we will have five peoples that will meet regularly as the education committee. So if you're interested in being on that committee, please email me and let me know, and we'll get that committee set up and rolling. Any other questions on that? Okay, Janine, first read?
Okay, so we have four policies for first read, as I mentioned in the report. The first one is JICJ, unauthorized communication devices. If, and the second is AB, New Hampshire Parental Bill of Rights. The third is EHAG, use of generative artificial intelligence. And the fourth is EBCH, chemical safety and chemical hygiene plan. If you have questions about these, please let us know. Send me an email or Dr. Forrest an email. And if you have questions about generative AI, I, the policy does, the policy does a good job of describing basically what generative AI is. This is about the use of it in the district and with how, basically, when you can use it, how you can use it, where it's restricted. So if you have questions about that, do you think that, I mean, like, email either Dr. Forrest or myself, and we will direct that as we think appropriate.
Okay. Any questions? All right, Neil, the timeline for our transportation requests.
Sure, you have, in your packet, I think it's the last page, a draft timeline. As Mike mentioned, there is a possibility of coming forward and negotiating an extension, but at the same time, that may be happening, we want to be prepared to go out with an RFP. So this would be the timeline largely, we'd get it ready, and you'd approve it either at your next, this says the next meeting, but it could be the meeting after, and would go out with submissions due in mid-October. And then they would be reviewed and companies interviewed and ready for a school board vote by December 2nd, so that could be included in there. Some of the things, there was a RFP put out last year that, sort of in advance, some of the things that were in there for options were school choice within the district, same start time, which I think is, has been discussed, and single-tier busing. We were also asked if propane was our only choice for fuel, and there's been a lot of discussion around spare buses and, and that, so we'd be looking at that. So those are some of the things that maybe if you have opinions on and the board wants to make some decisions on now, they wouldn't necessarily have to be options in the RFP, but they, we also could put them in as options in the RFP, or if there are other items that aren't included on that list.
Okay. I think we, we tried to meet with the people from the transportation committee, but could not get a time set up with them. So we will be trying to meet with them as soon as possible to determine if, number one, they're interested in allowing us to do a one-year extension of the contract. Two is how much... Two is how much it will be, so that we can then determine whether that's a possibility. I think doing the one-year extension would allow us to do some studying into some of those issues that Neil had just talked about, especially whether or not we're interested in going forward with the single-tier busing. So, we try to get that set up to find out what the possibilities are, and then bring that back to you in the next meeting, to determine whether or not we would do the RFP or just do an extension. So, any questions or comments about that? Yes?
Why are the two, as you're describing, mutually exclusive? Couldn't we craft the best RFP possible, put it out, and still pursue what would be a one-year extension? I, I think the best way to study, it'll be difficult to study the single-tier busing and later start times without knowing the costs, and you can only really know the costs having received back a quote for those services. So, I would, I'm kind of more in favor of all options.
Yeah, I agree 100%, and also, I think your negotiating position is stronger if we've got an RFP on the street saying, you know, hey, we're, we're looking at other people, right? If, if it's just like, we don't want to put out an RFP and we want to negotiate with you, you're over a barrel, and we've already seen that, we've taken it pretty hard in our costs here.
Janine?
Neil, is that possible, to do both at the same time?
I, yes.
Okay.
I think it is.
Yeah. Greg?
I guess the only other problem with the current proposal, if we don't do both at the same time, is your timeline has a final approval of an RFP in two weeks, and now you're talking about coming back to us whether or not we can do something in two weeks, and that math don't add. So we, we can't do a final, we can't do a final approval in two weeks if we're only going to find out in two weeks whether or not we can do an extension. So I, I think we need to discuss now what we want to put in the RFP and move forward with that, and also find out if we can do the extension, because otherwise, this, this timeline is a waste of time, because it can't be done.
Okay. Yes.
In light of starting the, the discussion now, the, at the top of the list of issues for discussion are school choice within the district, and that is referring to a section in the prior RFP that I found was the, maybe not so necessary and pretty burdensome, or left the impression on me that it would be burdensome to bid on. I don't think it suits us in an RFP. I think we have to simplify. I'll add some of my other thoughts, and then let other people speak. Definitely keep in, single-tier, I think that, that should be the focus of where we're asking people to bid on multiple scenarios, is, is single-tier later start time. And in my personal opinion, I would ask K-12 on a single bus, to further simplify it, and that being the, the way to potentially reduce costs. I like seeing the propane or multiple options for fuel, as, and they're going to have to, Tim's going to have to explain it to me again and again, and I'll just keep asking, why is it, again, in our best interest to be purchasing and holding the fuel for our fleet versus letting the carriers purchase and hold the fuel? So, if it's in our best interest, sure, but every year, you know, I'm going to ask that question, and the spare buses, I leave to you. The other thing that I would pull out of the last RFP, there were a number of mentions of specific addresses or locations where the lot should be within our community, specific references to 202 and Peterborough, which are obviously not practical if another carrier would be looking at providing us services. So anything we can do to, to limit the scope, but expand the availability of the bid.
Janine?
I, I'm, I'm sure everybody's aware, there's only basically two carriers that are available to us, and one is only used by one other, and newly used, I think it was the Keene, Keene District that is using, at First Choices, it called, for the first time?
Keene just switched to student transportation.
Okay, all right. And they're the only ones using it, so it's not like there's a lot of people out there to bid on. The last time I went up for a bid, I believe that there were no other bids.
I think, I think there were two. I might be mistaken, but I think there were two bids.
Yeah.
I think it would, there's a good possibility there would be two bids.
Yeah.
I would agree with the school choice within the district. I, I can't imagine, I don't know where that came from, and I, I can't imagine how they could do that. It seems like it would be extremely expensive. And I agree, I think the most important thing to me is that same start time, the later start time. We've been looking at research for years, we had a survey and a request from high school students themselves, they conducted their own research, asking for that later start time. There's extensive research, and Greg himself has, like, advocated for that later start time, so I, that's a really big thing, I think, for this board.
Okay. I think the school choice came out of the situation where we were looking at consolidation. And part of the consolidation plan was that, like, students in, in the different small schools that were being consolidated could have a choice between one or two schools to go to. So, you know, that's where the school choice came from, is, you know, if, if we closed Francis Town, some of the students could have gone to Bennington, some of the students could have gone to Greenfield, so. Right, yep. So I think, yeah, so the school choice part, I don't think really is applicable anymore, so. Other questions or comments? Jim?
Yeah, I, I agree entirely with what Curtis said and Janine as well. The propane-fueled buses as the only option, I think, is, is constraining and getting rid of that constraint. You know, whether we're buying the fuel, and the, or the vendor is buying the fuel, if it's propane, if it's diesel, whatever gets us to equal-quality transportation, equal-reliability transportation at the lowest cost is a winner, so.
Okay. Questions? Greg?
Single here.
Yeah.
Greg, you had mentioned this a year ago, and it stuck with me, but there should be some contingency, or some, some clause in there that demands the use of route optimization software.
Also brilliant. I do remember saying that once upon a time. Thanks for reminding the gray-haired guy.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Yes, Bill?
Just curious, does this include our special ed transportation as well, or is that a separate contract?
Go ahead.
In district, this includes in-district special education, out-of-district is separate.
And out-of-district, one of the things that we're aiming at trying to look at is ride shares, because I know several districts get together and share rides with students who are going to one specific placement. And it's ridiculous to have three school districts that are close together paying full price to bus kids to, to a placement, so. Other questions or comments? Anything else that you feel we need?
Nope, I think that gives me everything I need. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other public comment? Okay, we do have need for a couple of issues in non-public. So, can I have a motion to go into non-public session over RSA 91A32C? Which is staff?
Move to enter non-public session under RSA 91A32C, staff?
A second? Okay. Tom, you want to start?
Greg, yeah.
Curtis, yes.
Tom, yes.
Okay.